Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular scheduled council meeting for Wednesday, December 3rd. Let the record show all councilors are present. We did our pledge allegiance before our working session, so we will move on to adds and deletes. Adds consent agenda number 12, number 13, number 14, and number 15. We'll move on to approval of the agenda, wishes of the council.
Motion to approve?
Most approved by Councilor Fasso.
Support.
Support by Councilor Bayless, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carries. Approval of the minutes, approve the minutes to the Hibbing City Council meeting of November 3rd, November 19, 2025, wishes of the council.
Motion approved.
Most approved by Councilor Bayless?
Support.
Support by Councilor Fasso, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carries. Approve the minutes of the Hibbing City Council workshop of November 19, 2025, wishes of the council.
Motion approved.
Most approved by Councilor Bayless?
Support.
Support by Councilor Whitney, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carries. This time we'll move on to the consent agenda. Number one, approve the council payable dated November 26, 2025, checks number 181501 through 181605, and drafts an amount of $3,767,142.56. Two, approve the city payroll for the pay period ending November 14, 2025, in amount of $652,100.52. Three, approve the resolution number 25-12-01, establishing updates to personal policies and drug and alcohol and cannabis testing policies. Four, approve the resolution 25-12-02, authorizing the application acceptance of CDVG funds for the New Haven Drive Phase 2 to serve the HRA of Hibbing Asavi Manor Development. Five, authorize the posting of one temporary full-time labor automatic truck driver. Six, approve the 2026 tobacco license. Seven, approve the 2:00 AM license renewal for the Do U LLC. Eight, approve the raffle permit application request of the Blue Jacket Hockey Club to hold the raffle on Tuesday, February 10, 2026, at the Hibbing Memorial Arena. Number nine, authorize the Hibbing City Council to attend the Hibbing Council Chamber of Commerce's 121st Annual Dinner on Friday, January 30, 2025, at the Hibbing National Guard Armory. Number 10, authorize the Hibbing City Council to attend the Rams Annual Dinner on Tuesday, December 9, 2025, at Iron Trail Motors Event Center in Virginia. Eleven, authorize the posting of one full-time equipment operator positioned for the public works. Twelve, authorize the hire of Bella James for temporary rank attendant position pending pre-employment contingencies. Thirteen, authorize the hire of Sidney Hannigman for temporary rank attendant position pending pre-employment contingencies. Fourteen, authorize the hire of Opal Polari in a temporary rank attendant position pending pre-employment contingencies. Fifteen, authorize the mayor to sign a letter of support to Dupont Road, East 25th Street Reconstruction Project. Sixteen, set the next Hibbing City Council meeting for Wednesday, December 17, 2025, at 5:00 PM in the Hibbing City Council Chambers. And seventeen, set the next Hibbing City Council Workshop Meeting for Wednesday, December 17, 2025, following the 5:00 PM regular Hibbing City Council Meeting in City Council Chambers. Wishes of the council.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read and published.
Motion by Councilor Hoffman-Sockman?
Support.
Support by Councilor Fasso? Bayless? Any discussion?
Mayor.
Yes?
Just a quick correction, item eight was January 30, 2026, it says 25.
Okay, February, yeah?
Number nine.
Number?
Number nine, okay, January 30, 2026, very good. That stands, Amanda? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Support? Close? All in favor? Passes. We would, any public forum? No public forum, at this time we go to public hearing. And number one is public hearing regarding the vacation right-of-way in Victory Acres. Who is taking that?
So, Mayor, you have to call for anyone to provide input with regard to it, and then...
Three times?
Yes.
All right, not public, okay. So we have a public hearing regarding the vacation of the right-of-way in Victory Acres, tabled from November 19, 2025. Does anybody wish to speak to that vacation? Second time, does anybody wish to speak to that vacation? A third, does anybody want to speak to that vacation? Hearing none, move on to eight.
You need a motion to close the public hearing.
We have a motion to close. Wishes of the council.
Motion.
Motion approved by Councilor Swiberger?
Support.
Support by Councilor Whitney, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carries. Eight, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor, I believe Candy passed this around, there's a draft resolution in your packets this evening for your consideration. This matter comes before you because a citizen made a request to the Engineering Department, Mr. Jarmer did, and he had proposed to vacate certain rights of way that the city has within Victory Acres Platt, he's an owner of parcels there. So on the last page for your, for illustration for you, and the proposed resolution, you should have a yellow sheet that looks like that. So, Mr. Jarmer wanted, so if you, if you look at the, I'll say the center cross-piece, he wanted all of that vacated, and he also wanted the area down the right-hand side vacated as well. Mr. Story advised him that the city would not be agreeing to all of that, that's why you see the red hash mark is only where Mr. Story is recommending you vacate. There are properties and utilities in the centerpiece, and that's why it cuts off it there, so those people can still access, and the cities can still access utilities. And the city has a water line down the right-hand side, which is why Mr. Story did not recommend that as a vacation either. I had a phone conversation with Mr. Jarmer after the last time when this hearing was continued, explained that to him, he understood that, he was then comfortable with what is being proposed here this evening for the vacation. So, the area that's red hashed is what would be vacated by the city.
Okay, so the right is not vacated, half of the left, and then about a third of the center.
Correct.
Any questions? Okay, hearing that explanation, I'm looking for a motion, wishes of the council.
Motion approved.
Most approved by Councilor Swiberger?
Support.
Support by Councilor Hoffman-Sockman, any other discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carries.
Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Andy. At this time, we will move on to department committee reports. First up, it will be a closed session evaluation. Basically, the opening statement here is, the agenda item is evaluation of the performance of the city Hibbing employee under Minnesota Statute Section 13D05 subdivision 3, clause A, the employee is Kaylee Qualley. Ms. Qualley received a written notice of this meeting. I will now entertain a motion to close this portion of the meeting for the evaluation of performance of Kaylee Qualley as a city Hibbing employee under Minnesota Statute Section 13D05 subdivision 3A. Wishes of the council.
Motion to approve?
Most approved by Councilor Fassos?
Support.
Support by Councilor Bayless? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carries. The time right now is 6:50. Is that, or 5:50? So we will now go into closed session. Okay, we are now back into open, following a closed meeting for evaluation of the performance of city Hibbing employee Kaylee Qualley under Minnesota Statute Section 13D05 subdivision 3, clause A. The city Hibbing City Council meeting is now open, the time is 6:17. Members, I will entertain a motion of the following, that Kaylee Qualley be removed from employment of the city Hibbing effective December 3, 2025, which will be her last day of employment with the city for non-disciplinary reasons as specified in City Administrator Greg Pacincis' letter to Kaylee Qualley of November 26, 2025. The city administration provided Kaylee Qualley with appropriate notices related to this decision. Wishes of the council.
Mayor, I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Bayless?
Support.
Support by Councilor Fassos? Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carries. I would like to thank Ms. Qualley for her years of service with the city Hibbing, thank you. At this time, we'll move on to city engineer, Mr. Story.
Mayor, council, first one is the placeholder for 41st Street, the Ditch Grading Project. So, I received the estimate today, schedule from BAR Engineering is plans and specs next week for review, then we'll go for bids, looking to bring the bids to council around the January 21 council meeting. So that's the schedule for that, oh, sorry about that, that's the schedule for that, we are on track, we're a couple weeks maybe behind on the original schedule from BAR, so, yeah, we'll bring that to council once we get the bids.
Very good. Hearing what Mr. Story had to say, wishes of the council.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve? Do we need, do we need a motion?
Well, I think we, it's a placeholder.
It's just an update, right?
An update, we're good?
That was an update.
Okay, I just want to make sure we have support on that, all right. B, Mr. Story?
Mayor, council, this is Resolution 25-12-06, applying for an accepting from the Commissioner of Transportation for a grant from the Local Road Improvement Fund in the amount of $1.5 million. This is the grant that we have Miriam Kirill working on for us, the submittal is next Friday, the letter of support was in the consent agenda previous to this, so I'm asking for council to approve the resolution so we can apply for this grant.
Okay, hearing what Mr. Story had to say regarding resolution for grant application, wishes of the council.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Councilor Hoffman-Sockman?
Support.
Support by Councilor Whitney, any discussion?
Mayor, one other thing, this is for 25th Street from First Avenue to Highway 169.
Okay, very good. We have a first and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carries. We'll move on to three, Finance Director, Ms. Mulner.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, for item A, I'm asking council to authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the general fund grant agreement for the Hibbing Public Safety Center project. The drafted grant agreement should have been within your packet this evening, it's for the $10 million that we were awarded back from the 2023 session for our public safety center, and it's being routed through, the grant is being administered through the Department of Public Safety, I think everything is ready to go for the grant agreement, we just need approval to sign and then have this, have it routed to the state for signatures.
Very good, hearing what Ms. Mulner had to say, wishes of the council.
Motion approved.
Most approved by Councilor Bayless?
Support.
Support by Councilor Hildebrand, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carries, thank you, Ms. Mulner.
Thank you.
We have nothing in bids and quotes, there was nothing added, correct? Okay, at this time, we'll move on to truth and taxation, representation, public hearing, and Ms. Mulner?
Good evening, I'd like to start off with our City of Hibbing Truth and Taxation 2026 Budget and Levy Presentation. I handed out presentations for the city council, it's also on the screen for the public at home, there's also hard copies up here if anybody would like to grab one. So I'll start off by just talking about property tax terminology that'll be used throughout the presentation. Taxable market value, or TMV, is the valuation of your property that is subject to property tax. Net tax capacity, or NTC, is your taxable market value times your property tax class rate. The levy is the amount that is determined by the city that is needed from property taxes to fund the budget. Tax rate is the levy divided by the total tax capacity, this percentage is used to calculate your taxes. To calculate your city taxes, you would multiply your net tax capacity by the city's tax rate. To calculate your total taxes, you will need to have the tax rates for all the taxing jurisdictions that are listed on your tax statement. The Taconite Homestead Credit, that's for qualifying homeowners on the iron range located within the Taconite Tax Relief Area, they are eligible for a tax credit that reduces their final property tax bill. A supplemental equivalent credit is available to properties outside the Taconite Relief Area that face similar issues. So the Minnesota Property Tax System, on January 1st, the assessor determines the value for the following year's taxes, so 2026 taxes are based on evaluation from January 1 of 2025. Properties are not taxed directly on value, they are taxed based on tax capacity. Different property types have different class rates, multiplying the taxable market value by its class rate will arrive at its tax capacity. For example, residential homestead class is 1% on the first $500,000, 1.25% for any value over $500,000. For residential non-homestead, the class rate would be 1.25%. Commercial industrial utility is for the first 150, or first 150,000 of value is 1.5, anything over 150,000 is 2%. Apartment for four or more units, that would be 1.25%. So next, I'll talk a little bit about the property tax cycle for the calendar year. So again, January, the assessor values real and personal property based off of the prior year's sales data. Then in March, the county auditor will send a property tax statement for the prior year levy and the current year's budget. Between March and April, valuation notices are sent to property owners, this is based off of that January assessment, these values will be used in next year's property tax calculations. April to May, the local Board of Appeal and Equalization convene, if you want to appeal your valuation, now would be the time. May 15th, your first half of your real property taxes are due from that statement that you received from the county back in March. August 15th, you can apply for a property tax refund, Form M1PR, you can claim your refund for up to one year past this date, and then there's a link here available for the public if they'd like to go apply for a refund. September 30th is when the preliminary budget and levy for the subsequent year must be adopted, the levy in the preliminary budget is reflected on the proposed tax statements. October 15th, the second half of real property taxes are due from those statements that were received back in March. November 10th through the 25th, that's when truth and taxation notices are sent out to property owners, the proposed tax statement is based off of preliminary budgets from September and evaluations from March. November 25th, truth and taxation meetings can occur anytime on or after that date. In the month of December, the final budgets and levies are adopted for the following year's collection, the final levy cannot exceed the preliminary levy. And then December 31st is the last, the last day for real property owners to file a homestead application with the assessor's office. So where does your tax dollar go? And this list is not intended to be all-inclusive. So for St. Louis County, there's a tax line on there for residents in Hibbing for the county, that would be, that would pay for things such as the county sheriffs or your public safety, operations and governance such as IT, HR, safety and risk management, property management, et cetera, public works in transportation, community services such as public health and human services and veteran services, economic and community development, land and minerals, planning and zoning, public records and valuation. For the City of Hibbing line on the tax statement, which is approximately 53%, would be general government services such as IT, HR, finance, building and housing, mayor and council administration, public safety such as police, fire, ambulance and code enforcement, public work such as engineering, streets and alleys in the garage, culture and recreation, which includes the Mindview Bus Museum, Memorial Building, golf, parks and rec, and library. Economic and community development includes HITA, other economic development in the general fund, and then tax abatement, and then other miscellaneous such as our cemetery and the many judgments and losses. Then there's an ASD 701 line, approximately 13%, and this is for the Hibbing School District, that includes district administration and support, educational instruction, pupil support services, site building and equipment, fiscal and other fixed programs. Then you'll have a special taxing district line, which is approximately 1%, and this includes a levy for the Hibbing Housing and Redevelopment Authority, or the HRA, and then the Arrowhead Regional Development Commission, or ARDC, and then there's a St. Louis County Railroad Special Levy. So, everybody that lives in Hibbing should have, that pays property taxes, should have received a proposed tax statement for 2026, it was something like this, and that would be based off of the preliminary levy that had the 9.99% increase that was set on September 30th.
Sheena can ask a question?
Sure.
Where's the airport? Where's the airport reflected here?
It's in the city line.
What's that?
It's in the city line, but it's in Chisholm and Hibbing's.
Okay, but it's still a large amount, so it's not listed?
Right, yes, I should have probably put that on there, but yes, it would be part of the City of Hibbing 53%.
Okay, thank you, because that's a pretty good amount of money.
Yes, yes, and that is spread over, that will have a slide later on about that, but that'll be, that'll be split over Hibbing and Chisholm.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So that one we talked about. So homestead exclusion, for homesteads valued at $95,000 or less, the exclusion is 40% of the market value, creating a maximum exclusion of $38,000. The exclusion is reduced as property values increase and phases out for homesteads valued at $517,000 or more. This exclusion increased from $413,800 in 2024. So if you look at the table, you'll see that at $25,000, the bar is down here, and then it continues to increase up to the $95,000 where it's the highest amount, and then this exclusion begins to phase out all the way down to the $517,000. So then we'll do an example, this is for a residential homestead that has an estimated market value of $280,000. So their maximum exclusion would be $38,000 on the $95,000, and then you would take the value over the $95,000, which is the 185, the benefit reduction amount would be multiplied by the, the 185 multiplied by 9%, which would give you $16,650. And then the final exclusion amount, you deduct the $38,000 minus 16,650 to get the $21,350, so that $21,000 would be reducing your $38,000 exclusion, or the $16,000 would reduce the $38,000 and give you a $21,000 exclusion. So your taxable market value would be 258,650. The class rate is 1% because it's a, it's a less than $500,000 homestead, so that would give you a net tax capacity of 2587. Then after you've determined the net tax capacity, you need to figure out your tax extension rates. So you would figure out the county tax extension rate, so these are just approximate estimates here for this example, but you would take the extension rate for the county levy, the extension rate for the city levy, and then the extension rate for the school district levy, and then the extension rate for the special district levy, come up with your total tax extension rate, and then that's how you would know what to multiply by your net tax capacity to figure out your total gross taxes payable. So in this example, it's $4,333, and then that's the gross taxes before credits. So then on this slide, this would be where you would get any dollar-for-dollar credits that apply to your property. So, many of us up here in the Taconite region have that Taconite Homestead Credit, so that's 66% of homestead tax with a maximum of $515, this was increased from $315.10 in taxes payable in 2025, so now that credit is 515. So this example, total tax excluding special assessments, would be $3,818.48. Here is an example of Hibbing's local net tax capacity since 2018. So if you look at this bar graph, you'll see it was slowly climbing at about $8 million back in 2018, and then there's a large spike here up in 2024 where it went up to about $12 million, and now it's stabilized here between 2024 and 2025. This slide is meant to show the local net tax capacity by class over the last 10 years, so it's showing you what's happening with the different spread of classes paying for the property tax levy. So you'll see in 2015, residential paid 58%, and then apartments for commercial industrial 24%, utility railroad mineral personal property 8%. When you jump up to 2025 over here, you can see that the residential went from 58 to 65%. Commercial, or apartment changed just a little bit by 1%, and then commercial industrial dropped from 24 to 18. So, 2025 residential is paying more percentage of the property tax. 2026 preliminary levies, which are reflected on your proposed tax statements. So the first column is, is for 2025, and then 2026 is in the second column, the third column will show the increase or decrease. You can see that the general fund, which includes the transfer in for the library, is increasing by approximately 12%. Capital, a little under 25%, permanent improvement just under 10%. The city is not levying an OPEB debt service levy this year because we have fund balance. And then the debt service, bonded debt and certificates of indebtedness, that increased by 50% because we were in the process of issuing debt for our public safety building, and our local sales tax revenues were new, so we were trying to gauge how much money we were going to get. So the total for the city levies portion is 10.87, housing and redevelopment authorities didn't increase at all, and then Chisholm-Hibbing Airport didn't increase at all, so that is a bottom-line net increase of 9.99%. Major contributing factors to the changes in the operating budget for revenues, local government aid funds 40% of the city's operating budget, LGA had a minimal certified increase for 2026 of $21,840, or 0.23%. Taconite aids and taxes fund around 9% of the operating budget, Taconite aids are expected to decrease by 133,972, or 5.8% for 2026. Ambulance revenues are expected to increase by around $100,000. Building permanent, building permit revenues are expected to increase around $50,000. The city built in a $235,797 transfer in from the other post-employment benefit fund to help offset the costs of rising healthcare costs. And then our other revenues had a minimal increase with an overall net increase in revenues of $181,598, or 1.15%. So then major contributing factors on the expenditure side, salaries, a cost of living adjustment was built into the proposed budget for 2026, plus our step increases according to our base pay structure. Benefits, consistent with national trends, healthcare costs are rising steadily, the city built in the preliminary estimate for, for premium increases, a 13% increase. Minnesota paid leave goes into effect on January 1, 2026, the city is responsible for paying a minimum of 50% of the premium. Costs of goods and services continue to increase while inflation has slowed, headline consumer price index, or CPI, was 3% year-over-year for 2025. So, going fund by fund now, we have the general fund up first, the 2026 general fund revenue and expenditure summary, first column is the 2025 budget, second column is the 2026 preliminary budget, so there's that almost 12% increase, which is actually an increase in spending of only 5.36%, but it would require a general fund property tax levy increase of 11.88%. You'll see the licenses and permits increased by about 11% largely from building permit revenue increases, and then the charges for service, services largely because of that ambulance revenue increase, fines and forfeits decreasing because there's less parking tickets issued, and then here you can see the transfer from the OPEB fund to help offset the retiree insurance that was built into the budget this year. On the expenditure side, the personnel costs are the largest contributing factor to these increases, and then the transfer to fund, the anticipated library deficit went down because we have fund balance in there for 2026. Then on the library fund, we have that state-certified minimum maintenance of effort levy that has not changed, so that levy is still at the $586,43. The next three lines enter governmental revenue, charges for services, and miscellaneous, those three line items aren't large dollar amounts, they're larger percentages, but they're small dollar amounts, and then the other financing sources is due to that decrease in transfer in, and then the library expenditures decreased because we have the maintenance for the library being budgeted. is decreased because we have the maintenance for the library being budgeted in the general fund, which will be a deficit of 7% utilizing fund balance. The 2026 HITA fund revenue and expenditure summary. We have not increased the levy. It stayed the same at $105,177. The levy has consistently been the $105,177. It cannot exceed 0.01813% of estimated market value in Hibbing. And then our expenditure side has a small increase from $183,000 to $185,000, which the majority of the increase was for professional services. And then we do have a budgeted deficit, but we'd be utilizing fund balance that is in the fund to pay for that. Other economic development special levies, we have tax abatement, $75,000, PNF development, River Creek development, our LNM radiator tax abatement agreement, and then the CHA MOU for the airport. And in our debt service levy funds, we have a few different bonds that we pay back for. We have the 2018 A, 2020 A, 2022 A, 2024 A, and then now the 2025 A bonds. And so those are, those are based off of whatever the principal and interest is due in the following year. This first one, you'll see that we have a larger increase because we had pledged funds from the, from 2025, so therefore the 2026 had a higher increase. But Minnesota State Statute, Chapter 475, requires that in the case of general obligations, that the city must levy for each year of the term of the bonds in an amount that, together with pledged revenues, will produce 105% of the principal and interest due each year. Then here's our OPEB fund. You'll see that the OPEB levy was $290,000 for 2025. We did not build the levy into the 2026 budget, and then we had built in the transfer out of $235,797 to help offset some of the retiree insurance costs. We do have interest income through September of 2025 of $302,622, so using some of that interest income to help reduce the cost of the retiree insurance levy. So next, we can talk about capital. For the preliminary budget, we increased it from $1,035,000 to $36,000 to $1,092,716. Preliminary budget capital projects include the ladder truck, which we plan to do on a 10-year interfund loan. It had a squad car, plow truck, golf course sprayer, feasibility and pre-design of a potential future recreation center, a new ambulance, life safety systems at our memorial building, cemetery columbarium, and then the grounds master mow where at the cemetery. Our permanent improvement levy, that increased from $1,0216,243 to $1,0335,111. Preliminary projects included, but weren't limited to our annual sidewalk project for the city participation, alley resurfacing, our city paving projects, and then the BNSF railroad crossing. Sorry. Additional levies requiring city approval, there's the HRA levy. Housing and redevelopment authority, HRA, the city must consent via resolution to levy for the HRA. The levy is limited to 0.0185% of the previous year's estimated market value of the city. This levy is within the special taxing district line item of Hibbing's tax statements. And then the preliminary levy for pay 2026 was $100,000, $100,000, which was consistent with 2025. Yeah. Another levy that requires city approval is for the Chisholm-Hibbing Airport Authority. We must, both Hibbing and Chisholm must consent via resolution to a levy for the CHA. The levy is spread across the tax base of both the City of Hibbing and the City of Chisholm. This levy is reflected in the city line, city tax line of the tax statement. Preliminary levy for pay 2026 was $821,000, which was consistent with 2025. Enter price funds for business-type activities. The sewer and sanitation funds, they operate as business-type activities. Therefore, the city doesn't levy ad valorem taxes to support them. Fees are charged on public utility statements issued by Hibbing Public Utilities. Garbage services provided include garbage service, recycling center, sanitary and storm sewer. Proposed fee increase for sewer is 5%, and stormwater is 7.5% for 2026. Landfill fees will be collected directly by St. Louis County and will not be reflected on the utility bill beginning in January 2026, and the proposed garbage tipping fees remain the same. So on this next slide, I'd like to just show what the impacts to a residential homestead taxpayer for the proposed tax statement looked like. This would be for the city tax line only, and that was with our preliminary increase of 9.99%. So you can see the different levels here. If your estimated market value is $75,000 is the first column, and if your estimated market value was $300,000 in this last column, that would be the increase in the city line if your valuation did not change. And then the average value per the assessor's office is currently around $163,100. So that's this last line over here. So that person's taxes would go up annually approximately $80.30. That's for the preliminary levy, which set a cap on the amount that the city can levy for the following year. The final levy cannot exceed the preliminary levy. So how do we compare to our neighbors? Here's the city average local net tax capacity rate versus some of our neighbors. So the City of Hibbing is in the blue. That's the first bar in the bar graph, and then you can see Chisholm next to us. Then we've got Virginia Ebleth Gilbert here in the middle, so they're up higher for their tax rate. Mountain Iron is lower, and then Grand Rapids is slightly lower than, than us. We're pretty close to what Chisholm is in tax rate. So the final 2026 budget and 2025 levy. Once the final budget levy is adopted, budget books will be available for viewing at Hibbing City Hall in the clerk's office room 201 or the Hibbing Public Library. And budget books will also be available online at the City of Hibbing's website at www.hibbingmn.gov. And then property tax relief. There's options here for you to go on the www.revenue.state.mn.us. I encourage everybody to check out some of these programs and see if you're eligible for these, because they might help with some of the tax relief for increased property taxes. And then here's contact information for myself. If there's any questions about the city's budget, or if you have questions about your assessed value or classification, you can call Rodella Lockyer. She's, she's the principal appraiser through St. Louis County, and then her phone number is listed here as well. So does council have any questions for me?
No, I, I, I think this whole process, as you've prepared a budget and presented it to us over the last two months as we progressed, you've done a great job of being very consistent as we move forward. Now it's just a matter of setting our final levy.
So then, if you want, the next step would be to open it up for the public hearing.
Yep.
Let me real quick, I just want to thank Sheena for asking, answering my questions throughout all the process as well.
Yep.
On an individual level, that's very helpful. Thank you.
Okay, so two is truth and taxation, taxation, public hearing. The purpose of the truth taxation public hearing is to disclose the city's 2025 proposed levy and 26 budget. So we do have, it is a public hearing. So, I'm going to choose to speak, correct?
Yes, if anyone would like to speak.
Yes.
Call for anyone to, to speak with regard to the, this Muller's presentation.
After hearing what you just had an opportunity to hear, we welcome everybody that's here today and anybody that wants to approach the front of the council. You're certainly welcome to do that. So I'm hoping to anybody that wants to come forward and talk, we certainly will do that.
Sheena, all these numbers that we have are preliminary numbers off of the preliminary.
Yep.
Right. So that it's subject to changes, so everybody's on, you know, like this isn't what we're looking at for.
That's correct.
That's our preliminary budget. We couldn't go over that. We can only go down.
That's right.
Right. And I, they just, I think the state average for cities this year is 8.7, is what the state averaged this year for levy. So, and our preliminary was around 10, and we will be dropping it, of course. That was our preliminary. We had to start somewhere. And Sheena, your office, and, and of course, with input from our council, we were able to work backwards. And we'll have to come up with the final budget here, levy, soon. But anyways, I'll offer again to the, anybody in the audience that wants to come forward and, and comment, you certainly have the opportunity to do that, and I welcome that. So... I'll ask one more time. If anybody in the audience wants to come forward and talk, I certainly welcome you to do that. It's not, don't be afraid to come up here and talk. We, we, we want to hear what you have to say. We do. So, okay. With no one moving forward, we'll move on to A, offer resolution 25.
Mayor, do you want to close the public hearing?
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. At this time, we will close the public hearing. We need a motion
Motion to second the close.
Wishes of the council?
Slow move.
Slow move by Councilor Swyberger. Supported by Councilor Hoffman-Sockman. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carries. Okay, we move on to 2A, offer resolution number 251203 approving the 2026 final budget and 2025 levy for the City of Hibbing. Wishes of the council?
Motion to approve?
Motion approved by Councilor Bayless, supported by Councilor Fossil. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carries. Okay, B, offer resolution number 251204 approving the certification of the final 2025 Housing and Redevelopment Authority, HRA levy in amount of $100,000 payable in 2026. Wishes of the council?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Councilor Hoffman-Sockman.
Support.
Support by Councilor Swyberger. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carries. C, offer resolution 251205 approving the certification of a 2025 final levy for the Chisholm-Hibbing Airport Authority in amount of $821,000 payable in 2026. Wishes of the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Swyberger.
Support.
Support by Councilor Fossil. Any discussion? Yes.
I just have a question for Andy. Should I abstain during this vote, since I reside on that commission?
That'd probably be prudent.
Okay, we have a stay from Councilor Hoffman-Sockman. Well, we have the remaining counselors. We have a first and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carries. At this time, we move to adjournment.
Slow move.
Slow move by Councilor Bayless.
Support.
Support by Councilor Hildebrand. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carries. Thank you, everyone.